Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Livingston County Board of Commissioners meeting for April 22, 2024. I'm calling the meeting to order, and we'll start with a moment of prayer by Commissioner Helsner.
Proud of me and thank you for this day. We ask your help today for each one that's here and each one that lives in our county, and for all the policies that are in each jurisdiction in our county, and in our state and our country. And we just pray that you will give us peace, that the good will come out and the evil we put down, and just give us wisdom beyond our years for tonight for the things that we'll be handling. And that may we do the best for our county and for what's right and good, for Christ's sake. Amen.
Amen. If you'd all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, move your heads.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Commissioner Drick.
Here.
Commissioner Helsner.
Here.
Commissioner Domas.
Here.
Commissioner Sample.
Here.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Here.
Commissioner Deaton.
Here.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Fiani.
Here.
And Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Oram is present.
Thank you. Item number five on the agenda is approval of agenda. May I get a motion?
So moved Nakagiri.
Support Deaton.
Thank you. Motion by Nakagiri, support by Deaton. Any additions, corrections, or deletions?
Mr. Chairman.
Recognized. Commissioner Gross.
The next item, number six correspondence, the packet we received did not include Crawford County, so the communication from them. So I would recommend that we delete that from the agenda.
Thank you.
Move, have it deleted from the agenda.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Gross, supported by Commissioner Helsner, that six A, a Crawford County entry on the meeting agenda be removed. Discussion? All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight to zero, it passes. Eight, excuse me, six A is deleted. With that amendment, any other comment or objection to the agenda? Seeing none, voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight to zero, we have an agenda. Next is correspondence, item number six on the agenda. Now it is six B through six G. Can I get a motion?
Motion to receive and place on file.
Thank you.
Support Deaton.
Moved by Nakagiri, support by Deaton to receive and place on file. Discussion, comment, objection? Seeing none, voice vote. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight to zero, we have received the correspondence, have we placed on file. We're now at agenda item number seven, the first call to the public tonight. It's a three-minute call. Do we have cards?
We do.
Please proceed.
Tara Pearson from Genoa, followed by Heather Williams.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Tara Black Pearson, and I'm at 144 South Hughes, Howell, Michigan, Genoa Township. I just wanted to introduce myself. I've filed for a position in Genoa Township, representing District Six, and I look forward to some changes on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Heather Williams from Marion Township, followed by Megan Williams.
When you're seated and comfortable near a microphone, you've got three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Heather Williams. I'm from Marion Township. I have filed the necessary paperwork to run for the Fifth District County Commission seat in the upcoming election. My husband and I are consistently being told by other county residents how distraught they are with the corruption of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners over the past several years. I researched the position, and I am confident that I would make a much more relevant representative for county representatives and residents than the current incumbent. Frankly, considering how upset people are, I'm surprised that more people haven't filed to run against the current board members, but the filing deadline is tomorrow, so that may change. Thank you.
Megan Williams from Heartland, followed by Steve Williams.
Ma'am, when you're seated and comfortable, you've got three minutes. You can proceed.
Thanks. My name is Megan Williams, as you all know now, and I have filed to run for County Commissioner of District Four as a Republican. Thank you.
Steve Williams from Marion Township, followed by Taryn Frye.
Mr. Williams, when you're seated and comfortable, you may proceed for three minutes.
Sure. Good evening. So I was a recipient of my first ride in the back of a Livingston County ambulance almost a year ago as a patient. I've been in there before in the front seats, but not in the back. And I just wanted to take a moment to compliment the members of the Livingston County ambulance service and 911. They did a great job in responding to a home accident with a closed dead injury, took great care of me, were very comforting to my family. I thought they did excellent work, excellent work. So I will mention that if they come back to you sometime and say that they need an extra long ambulance, then they're not just making that up. And yes, my shoes were off. They had a hard time fitting me in there. Now, it reminded me of when they came before the board a few years ago, and I was a commissioner, and certain people were asking, "Do you really need to buy powerlift stretchers?" And of course, they had to explain, "Well, yeah, because we have so many 300-pound plus residents these days, it's not safe for them or for our workers." So what I want to ask you all as commissioners, and I can see, like Commissioner Gross actually read the packet tonight and had something to address, but so many times, it seems like the questions that come out of this board are more of a "got you" kind of thing, rather than a real question that couldn't have been answered before the board meeting. Now, don't spend people's time and don't seem to belittle your staff who work so very hard on behalf of the county residents by seeming to put them on the spot and doing things like asking, "Well, is that really the right model of washer dryer for the Veterans Services Office?" and things like that. Those small things can be handled ahead of time. You have time, you have access. This is not a game of "got you." You need to respect the folks that work for the county, that work every day. They are your subject matter experts. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Taryn Frye from Howell, and that'll be the last card that I have in the chambers.
Hello, I'm Taryn Frye. Been a resident here of Howell. I live in Clyde, so the north side of Howell here. And I'm here on behalf of Jason Wolford, who is running for State Representative. He's the 50th district here. Thank you all for, you know, letting me speak here today. This is one of our rights as a citizen, and that is what Jason is going to be doing for us as well, is protecting our rights, rights for our children, protecting women and women's sports, protecting our border. These are all issues that Jason is looking to address in Lansing. So I appreciate you guys' support as well. He is a Marine Corps veteran as well as I am. I've known him for about three years, four years now, I think. He's a very honest guy, and I stand behind him. He's got a lot of integrity and honor, and he's obviously looked upon as being a leader in our community. So I appreciate your guys' votes and making sure that we keep moving this county in the right direction. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any on Zoom?
Yes, Commissioner, I have Paul Geisner.
Thank you, Mr. Geisner. When you're prepared and ready to go, you've got three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Very good. So my name's Paul Geisner, and I'm a resident of Marion Township. I have also filed to run as a candidate for County Commissioner for District Five. The reason I'm here making comment today is to express my concern and frustration about the lawsuit between the County Board and the Livingston County Courts. As a taxpayer, I'm concerned that, you know, this is a lawsuit and litigation that's not really needed, and that's money that could be used to providing services for residents of Livingston County. So I know there can be reasonable disagreements on policy around the funding levels of the courts, but I believe the board made pretty rash and, you know, sudden cuts to the court's budget, and I'd urge both parties to come together and try to work through this. I know there was mediation that was attempted, but it appears to have failed. So again, I urge both parties to come together and try to make a good resolution here for the betterment of all the taxpayers in the county. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And...
Mary Metallic?
Do we have your name right, ma'am?
Yes, that's correct.
New residence?
I live in Green Oak Township, and I'd like to, okay, I'd like to follow up on what Paul had to say. I'd like to express my opposition to Resolution 2024-04-052, which is a resolution requesting court case code, case weight, and caseload data from the state administrative office from the Board of Commissioners, I guess. All good words in that resolution, I guess, except some that I'll get to in a second. But this whole thing, Paul referred to the lawsuit. I mean, this all feels like political gamemanship, and this war with the courts, and to what end? Our courts operate very well. The specialty courts are lifesavers for countless many, and I would say the courts need more funding, especially for these specialty courts. But as Paul referenced, there's been $600,000 cut from the budget, $200,000 of that which was by fiat. So the court sued you. Yeah, okay. You're preventing them from doing their constitutionally mandated work. And again, I asked, "To what end?" The county has many millions of surplus. Why strangle the courts? And again, the courts do a good job. But furthermore, the fifth whereas in this resolution refers to a coming illegal alien placement here. And, you know, this is just plain fear-mongering. It's political hackery. Why would, I mean, these, and number one, they're not illegal. Immigrants seeking asylum are legal. Okay. Thank you very much, and I guess I should have led with this. I apologize. I'll do it much better. But I am running for County Commissioner in the Ninth District. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Any other on Zoom?
No, Commissioner, I do not see any.
Last chance to put your hand up if you're on Zoom. Seeing none, call to the public. Number one is closed. We're on to agenda item number eight, entitled "Approval of Minutes." We have eight A, entitled "Meeting Minutes," dated March 25, 2024. And we have eight B, entitled "Minutes," dated April 9, 2024. Can I get a motion on both?
So moved.
Yes. Proceed.
We also added eight C, mark the closed session for March 25, just to be clear on that.
Good catch. Thank you very kindly.
You're welcome.
And then we have eight C that should be part of the motion for our closed session minutes dated March 25, 2024. And don't forget to give those back at the end of the evening to our clerk. Can I get him? Do you still have the motion for all three?
Yes, so moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Support Gross.
Thank you. Moved by Domas, support by Gross. Comment, analysis, objection, question? Seeing none, I'll close that, and we'll go to voice vote on A through C. All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Eight to zero, those pass. Thank you, ma'am clerk. Nine is the agenda item we're on to now. It's tabled items from previous meetings. I find none. If anybody disputes that, let me know. Other than that, nine is done. We're on number 10, reports. Any commissioner have a report to us, other commissioners? Commissioner Helsner, you may have got the floor.
When Chairman Dirk became chairman, he asked me and another commissioner, Frank Samples, to look into possibility of Livingston County getting involved in preserving farmland, farmland preservation. And I have some preliminary information here. There's basically four different ways that I found that could be used. And again, this is just a preliminary. The first is in this brochure that I gave you, and that's about the PA 116 agreement, where people voluntarily ask their farm to be put in the land preservation. They get a tax deduction. And for so many years, they can do that. That's one way of doing it. The second way that I have given you here is, and this will be more on the township level, this is a system of buying and selling, the ability to develop. You would take a place, like a farm, that would, maybe you could put so many houses on, and they would sell their ability to put houses on to another place where they would have multiple housing. And so it's quite involved, and it really wouldn't be the county to do that, but there's a couple links that make more sense. And this is only the first two pages, so maybe about a five, seven-page report. There's a couple examples that I'm looking to get further. The third way, I had talked with Brandon Dandy, our Registrar of Deeds, who has a lot of real estate experience, and also checked with Cole Stoper of Rich Forefield. The county can buy land outright and then rent it out for farming, or the county could buy the development rights, kind of like the mineral rights, but they're development rights. So those are the four ways to do it. I just wanted to start the conversation for you to think about it, and Frank and I will be looking into it more specifically. But I don't know if you want me to field any questions now, or?
Does any commissioner have a question or analysis or comment for Commissioner Helsner and what we just started talking about?
This is just a preliminary. I'm, I don't know if I'm, you know, how I feel that the government, Livingston County government being involved in that. I think farmland preservation is a very good thing. But when our family moved to here in 1953, there was no question about this. We moved to a farmhouse that, like many other farmhouses, didn't have inside facilities. And the handy dump was you went to this little hill, and you threw everything over the side of the hill, and stayed there until, you know, somebody cleaned it up, you know? And so this is kind of a whole lot different now than it was then, but I, you know, now we need to think, what can we do, or should we do anything about preserving farmland? Is that our, is that our job?
Thank you. Any further or other report under our agenda item number 10? Seeing none, number 10 will be closed. We'll go to item number 11, and pursuant to my belief that we need to build an experienced bench, Commissioner Helsner will take over from this point on.
Okay, we are at 11A, Resolutions for Consideration. Resolution A, number A is 2024-04-040. The resolution authorizing the addition of 1.5 administrative specialist position in the Emergency Medical Services EMS Department, brought to us by the Emergency Medical Services. And Dave Felpass, do you want to say anything?
I move to approve the resolution.
We need a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve the resolution.
Support. Okay, moved by Nick Fiani, supported by Dave Domas. Dave Felpass, do you have?
We discussed it pretty much in depth, the general government, the other night. The only comment in the cost out is, is remember that we will actually not be filling that office manager position. So the annual increase going forward is only like $30,000, not what it was mentioned in the cost out. So not nearly as bad long-term as it looks. I think it was like $49,000 this year and $30,000 going forward, because I want that overlap to replace a very long-term office manager that I'm going to miss greatly.
Any questions for Director Felpass? Okay, if there's none, close the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. 11B, 2024-04-041, resolution authorizing an agreement with Michigan Veterans Affairs Agency to provide Livingston County Veterans Services training, reimbursement for required continual education units or CEUs, brought to us by the Veterans Service. Do I have a motion? So moved Deaton.
Support Gross.
Okay, moved by Deaton, supported by Gross. Director Baca, are you with us?
Okay.
I for one rate to vote, so.
Okay, okay. If not, let's, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh.
Okay. Could you give us a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helsner.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
And Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We're ready for 11C, 2024-04-042, resolution amending Resolution 2022-04-52, to add diesel fuel to the statewide cooperative agreement for gasoline delivery services with Petroleum Truck Traders Corporation, brought to us by Greg Kellogg and the car. Have a motion.
So moved.
Support Deaton. Okay, moved by Domas, supported by Deaton. This, Director Kellogg.
Good evening, commissioners. I will give you a little background on this, since this bypassed general government due to timing issues. So if you recall, back in 2022, at the Letts facility, we converted the diesel, underground diesel tank to gasoline. Reason for that was our fleet of diesel vehicles at Letts, but also across the county, is dwindling. We only have a handful left at Letts, and there's only a few one-off tractors and some odd vehicles that use diesel. So this is not, I don't anticipate the county using this diesel add-on or having any diesel deliveries. The reason this change is being requested is, actually, the proposal came from CoPro, but I do support it, is simply to make the statewide cooperative contract more appealing. You may also recall that with these statewide contracts through CoPro, any entity that uses it, makes a purchase on these contracts, the county does get a percentage of that. I'm not, I'm not sure what that is. I would look to Cindy if you have specific questions on that part. But it's, that's the reason I'm bringing this to you, is just to, you know, make that more useful, appealing to other entities that might want diesel in addition to gas, or one or the other. So that's about it. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions for George Kellogg? Okay, if not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 11D, 2024-04-043, resolutions of intent to apply for financial assistance for fiscal year 25 under Act 51 of the Public Acts of 1951, as amended. Do I have a motion?
So moved Gross.
Second sample.
Okay, moved by Gross, second by Sample. Director Kellogg.
Yes, and this one did go through committee, but I'll give a brief synopsis. So this is our annual application for state funding, and I just wanted to reiterate what I mentioned to general government. There are no new programs in this application. There's no new positions being requested. And just a reminder, this is for FY '25, which the state federal fiscal year '25 begins in October of this year. And this, this is sort of a, it sets the table for our 2025 county budget. But any expense, new or existing, has to be approved in the county budget before any of these funds can be spent. This is essentially just a, this is funding that is available to us, and it's an acceptance of that funding, or it's an approval of the application for that funding, but this is all, most of it is formula funding or funding that we otherwise are already eligible for. It's, there's no discretionary projects in here. I could tell you, some of the grant amounts have increased. So, you know, they're, it's, new positions wouldn't necessarily be off the table, but that would be down the road in the, when we're going through the 2025 county budget process. And I did want to also bring attention to the local, if you look at the table in the resolution, the local other column, $1.9 million. I also want to emphasize again that that column is everything that is not federal or state. So it's, it does not include any additional county general fund dollars. The, I'll just give you a preview that I would suspect the same request of $65,000 in the 2025 budget, unless things change. But just, I want to make that very clear, that that local other is not county funding. It's everything that's not federal or state. I do have to show a balanced budget with the application. So these are things, you know, fares, it does include the $65,000, but it also includes revenue that we generate from service agreements. You know, for example, the agreements with the hospitals, the townships. You know, for example, the agreements with the hospitals, the townships. It also includes a pretty big chunk of that is for the airport service agreement. Just a reminder, we only pass through the 35% state subsidy for that service, but I have to show a balanced budget and Michigan Flyer actually contributes a portion to that service, which I can go into if you'd like, but it's basically showing a balanced budget on paper. So I will stop there and, and just, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Do we have any questions for Director Kellogg?
Commissioner Helsman, really quick, I, we can hardly hear you. I don't know if you're not speaking into your microphone or if it's turned off, like you can't.
It must have turned off, yes. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you. Thank you. And one more thing too. We're picking up the shuffling of paper, so I don't know who is shuffling through paper, but if you can just be aware of that. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, we're now at 11E. Resolution twenty twenty four zero four zero four four. It's a resolution granting authorization of legal counsel to file petition in Washtenaw County Circuit Court to allow for lake level variations and confirm the boundaries of a lake level special assessment, special assessment district of Portage and baseline lakes on behalf of Livingston and Washtenaw Counties brought to us by the Drain Commissioner. Do I have a motion?
Sample.
Okay, it's been moved by Sample, supported by, by Domus. Okay. Okay, are there any questions for Ken Rucker at this point? We had a pretty good discussion about this before. And it's kind of more of a perfunctory sort of thing at this point. So, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. 11F. Comes to us from Dave Reader. It's twenty twenty four zero four zero four five, resolution authorized in an agreement with Carpal Solutions to provide software services for operation of the prosecutor's office. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Okay.
Support Nakagiri.
Okay, moved by Drick, support by Nakagiri. Okay, Carolyn Henry.
Good evening.
Prosecutor. Okay.
Thank you.
Chief Assistant Prosecutor.
Yes, good evening Commissioners. I appreciate you considering this resolution tonight. I know Prosecutor Reader talked at committee about this. I am here in case anybody has any questions.
Any questions that were not answered during committee? Okay, then we're all set to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes and thank you for coming.
Thank you so much. Thank you Commissioners.
11G. Brought to us by by the public defender's office. Director Gronhout. Twenty twenty four zero four zero forty six, resolution authorized in the business property lease agreement with one two one, one two two one building group LLC for Livingston County Prosecutor's Defender's Office to occupy one two two one Byron Road. Howell, Michigan, four eight eight four three. Do I have a motion?
So move Gross.
Support Nakagiri.
Okay, moved by Gross, support by Nakagiri. Okay. Director Gronhout.
Thank you. Yes, I'm here today bringing forward the lease agreement for one two two one Byron Road. I did bring it through to committee earlier and at that point in time it passed unabated. At this point in time, this is excellent space for my office. This is a space that we, when I opened up the office just over four years ago, going on five years ago now, it was built out for us specifically for our needs by the building group. And at that point in time, it was determined that we knew that our office was going to grow over time, that we were going to go from an office of approximately eight people and double in size to probably about 16 to 18 people. As you know, this year we did that. In the building group actually then allowed us to move into the back half of that office. They not only allowed us to do that, they had the other tenants leave and they built it out for us also. This is excellent space. It is literally designed for exactly what we need. This space is not only an excellent physical location, it has a bus stop directly out front of it. It is within a mile and a half of the courts. Our clients know where it is located, but also it's financially very reasonably priced. I did call around and speak with several, I shouldn't say several, two realtors with regard to the pricing of the building and it is at $16.67 a square foot annually. When I asked about that price, they said currently that's actually quite low and it's an excellent value based upon the price. There's a couple of different ways to look at pricing in the real estate market, certainly not coming to you as a real estate expert whatsoever. But the lease includes our taxes, the maintenance on the exterior and interior of the building. It also includes a snow plowing and that goes for anywhere from three to five dollars per square foot. And therefore annually would be approximately $30,000 worth of extra that we receive out of this lease. If you look at it from a reverse side, it's actually going to be about 12 to 13, $14 a square foot when the going market rate currently is significantly above that. And therefore I believe not only is this an excellent location, it was built specifically for us. It is exactly what our office needs in order to do the constitutional work that we are doing, but it also is coming in at a very fair and reasonable price. And the landlords went out of their way to make sure that they took care of the county and made sure that they took care of my office in a way, in a manner in which we are able to do our job effectively as we are constitutionally charged.
Are there any questions for? Director Gronhout?
The current lease expires July 31st of this year.
Correct.
Okay. I'd make a motion to postpone this to the June meeting so that we have an opportunity to explore our options and or negotiate.
Support Deaton. Any discussion on the motion to? Say the word again, postpone?
Postpone.
Until
the June 24th, fourth Monday in June, regular board meeting.
Okay, and now are you asking this to go back to committee?
No.
Or just back?
To us.
At the end of next month?
At the June meeting.
Okay, okay, that's two months then. Okay. Is there any discussion on that? Yes. Chairman, is there anything that we could clear up now while we have the director here? There any questions that we could ask that might make our job of reviewing this that much easier?
I've none.
Pardon me?
I've none. It'll occur during the postponement.
Okay. Would, okay. My question is with this motion, is there a reason why we could not do it next month?
Too short a time period.
Okay, if, if we approve this on the 24th of June.
It's well in advance of July 31st.
Okay, is, is that, would that be a sufficient timeframe for you?
I will work within any timeframe that you give me, Commissioner.
Okay, that's, you don't have a problem with that timeframe then?
I, I do not have a, a problem with the timeframe. No.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion on the, on the? This is not an amendment. This is a move to table, right, or postpone?
Postpone.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion to postpone? Okay, I'd ask for a roll call vote on the motion to postpone.
Commissioner Drick?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domus?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Motion to postpone carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And looking forward to seeing you again, so. Okay, we are now at 11G. Okay, H, okay. This is resolution twenty twenty four zero four zero four seven. It's resolution authorizing an agreement with Vance Outdoor Incorporated to provide ammunition supply services for the Livingston County Sheriff's Office. Do I have a motion?
So move Gross.
Second sample.
Okay, it's been moved by Gross, second by Sample.
So I, I just got to say, because I can't sit here and, and not say this, but I've been around a long time and this has been one of the more interesting days in county politics that I can remember. So now onto the resolution and we got one more day left, but anyway. So regarding the resolution, I did receive a call on this. I think most people were here for committee. This is a blanket, not a blanket purchase order, a bid for the next three years for ammo. So we will decide what we need for the sheriff's office off that list and budget accordingly. So don't try to make sense of the numbers. That was done through purchasing and quote pure, pure crow or whatever they, whatever they are.
Okay.
The way I understand it is a pretty reasonable increase from your last.
Yeah, I think, I, I think it was like about 5% or something, if I remember right. I wrote, I did write that down, but yeah. Very good. Very minimal increase. This guy is huge. As Director Kellogg mentioned, with that state, with the bid that way, if the county, if the county's a lead on it, they receive, we receive a couple bucks back on that. And this is the case in this one. We'd already purchased our ammo, so we weren't in a big hurry to, to go back out for bid, but it helped everybody else out. So, but yes, to answer your question.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And if you don't mind, I'll just sit here because I can probably speak to the next two. I know Sarah Applegate is up there for any finer details, but I, I can do the hundred thousand foot.
Okay, very good. Resolution I, 11I, twenty twenty four zero four zero four eight, resolution authorizing community corrections plan and application for fiscal year 2025 be submitted to the Michigan Department of Corrections on May 1st, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Support. Support Nakagiri.
Okay, moved by Fiani, supported by Nakagiri. Okay.
Yeah, so this is a grant through the state for 108 and some change. The board has always had a representative on the community corrections. It was, when we fired it back up, it was Carol Sue Reader, then it was Commissioner Deaton, and then it was, now it's currently Commissioner Domus. Long story short, there's no matching money. It's just, it's free money from the state. Yours and mine, yours and mine tax dollars to hopefully keep folks out of prison and reduce recidivism. That's the overall goal.
Okay, very good. I think. Any other questions or comments? Then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Okay, J, 11J. Resolution twenty twenty four zero four zero four nine. Resolution to prove the Livingston County Community Corrections Advisory Board's amended bylaws.
Support Nakagiri.
Moved by Fiani, support by Nakagiri.
So by the bylaws of community correction, we're supposed to go through these every couple of years, make sure they're current, up to date, et cetera, et cetera, any changes. There was a few changes that we recommended in here and those are highlighted. Nothing substantive or substantial, just a little bit of cleanup. So be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions or comments? Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yeah, I don't have a question. I just wanted to clarify that this, the bylaws were amended in committee and I have confirmed that the amended language is included in the bylaws and the specifically the amendment was additionally, all reports provided by the CCAB to the state of Michigan shall be posted on the county website no later than 30 days after the report has been sent to the state of Michigan. So I just wanted to confirm that the language of the amendment was included in the, in the bylaws. That's all I had.
Because we said we'd do it. Duh.
Well, the, the package did not include the amended language for the bylaw.
Understand.
So there might have been some confusion there.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. 11K. Twenty twenty four zero four zero five zero. A resolution to authorize first quarter budget amendment to the fiscal year 2024 budget. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Support Deaton. Okay, moved by Fiani, supported by Deaton. Do we need any questions to Cindy or are questions answered? Okay, we're ready for a roll call vote then. Give us a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domus?
Yes.
Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Drick?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to 11L. Resolution twenty twenty four zero four zero five one, resolution authorizing an extension to the agreement for Livingston County to host cooperative contracts for COVID-19 relief consulting services for Michigan municipalities through the Michigan Association of Counties CoPro program. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, moved by Fiani, supported by Domus. Are there any questions for our administrator? Okay, if there's no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We're to our last resolution. 11, or 11M. Twenty twenty four zero four zero five two, resolution requesting court case code, case weight, case load data from the state court administrative office.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, so support.
Support.
Okay, moved by Fiani, supported by Nakagiri. Discussion. Okay, Wes. Okay, Wes, Commissioner Nakagiri, you're the lead on this, if you'd like to.
Yeah, we, we did talk about this in committee. I just want to, since that time, confirmed prior analysis saying that the courts are overstaffed to the tune of about a million dollars a year in salaries that according to the State Court Administrative Office and the National Center for State Courts, staffing that they do not need. And that's not my opinion, that's the opinion of State Court Administrative Office and the, and the National Center for State Courts. So to take it one step further, so that we're, increase the confidence in the values that have been calculated, you know, getting this case code information, the case weight information, the case load information will enable us to confirm yet again the numbers. So I look forward to passage of this. With respect to the language chosen that someone in the community had take issue with, mentioning the crimes of illegals, I think they, when they say that's not an issue, I disagree. There was a rape of a fifteen-year-old in Green Oak Township by an illegal, and it should be appalling to all of us. And to suggest that it's not happening here in our county is, quite frankly, ridiculous. And so, you know, being able to save some money on staffing that is, the experts say we do not need, and potentially deploy those funds to other needs that are more pressing, that, that's the intent of this resolution. Thank you.
Is there any questions directed to Commissioner Nakagiri or comments? I would just like to say something that I, I believe that our Board of Commissioners, we are committed to have the best court system in the state. We think that many of our departments, our directors are known statewide, have our officers in statewide organizations in their own area. And Livingston County has done a good job overall in staffing and choosing leaders that well represent Livingston County. And I believe that this in no way should be interpreted as we want to lessen the value of our court system. We want to have the very best, but we do want to be careful of the taxpayers' concerns. And so, that's the reason why I support this. But, but we are committed to having a very good court system, so that's why it sounds. Any other comments?
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Oh.
No.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is passed. Number twelve, accounts payable. Reports, we'll take these together. A claims dated April twenty-two, twenty-twenty-four, and payables dated March thirtieth through April twelfth, twenty-twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
So move Drick.
Support Gross.
Moved by Drick, support by Gross. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are to our final call to the public. This is a two-minute call to the public. And you may address the Commission and the Chairman during this time. Do we have any cards?
I don't have any cards from the room.
Oh, okay. We have a person here. I, I will allow him to come. I, if you can present, give a card at the end, I guess so. So if you did, tell us your name and the township that you're from.
Yes, I'm Dave Roddy from Handy Township, where I serve on the Board of Director or Board of Trustees there. And I just wanted to take this opportunity tonight, want to say thank you for the service you provide for Livingston County residents. Also, I'm here on behalf of Christina Lake, who I want to take tonight to endorse publicly and support publicly and ask you to do the same if you wish. There's a ice cream social being presented and hosted by former state representative. This is Debbie, Cindy Demby will be hosting that and along with her husband. And they would like you all to be there to support Christina, or at least get to know her if you have never met her. And I just want to take that opportunity to ask you to do that. I'll leave some copies of a little flyer here for you. If you're interested in meeting her, or most of you already have, I'm sure.
Thank you, Dave. Is anybody else that didn't want to but didn't? Okay. Any, do we have anybody online on Zoom?
I do not see any, Commissioner.
Okay, then if that's, they're not there, I'll close the call to the public and ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move Nakagiri.
Support Deaton.
Moved by Nakagiri, supported by Deacon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned?